This is the first Tuesday of the month with Opaquah City Council Meeting.
I call this meeting to order and as always, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's face the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the Clerk's Open Meeting Statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Puchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
All right, we have a consent agenda. As Sandy has put in here that there are no additions to the consent agenda, so there are items on the consent agenda that we would make one motion with unless council would like to see any of those items moved to the regular agenda, and then we would vote on those separately. If you're okay with being on the consent agenda, we'd be just looking for a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, then we have regular agenda items, and these are items that of course we vote on each item separately. Again, Sandy says there's no additional items for the regular agenda, so what you see is what we have for tonight. So we'd need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second. Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have Emily Ideman is here tonight as our Assistant Library Director, and she's going to introduce our new teen library. Emily.
Well, thank you for allowing me to sit in for Peg. We just recently, this past August, hired a new teen librarian, and so I would just like to introduce Taylor Wilcox. Taylor, if I can stand up. She comes to us, actually she's been with the library for several years. She was hired as a page in our teen room for, since what, 2013? Mm-hmm. Since 2013, and is graduating from UW Stevens Point.
Yay! Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yay. So I don't know, Taylor, if you want to say anything? We're excited. Yeah, we're excited to have her on staff, so we expect great things from her.
High expectations. Yeah, well, welcome. Thank you for coming tonight and being introduced to all the city council members. We appreciate putting a face with names, so I'd like that. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
All right, let's move on then. We have a proclamation from the Opaquah Area Chamber of Commerce Month. There is a proclamation that's in your packet, and I'm actually going to read that. It's from the City of Opaquah Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas the Opaquah Area Chamber of Commerce has been serving the Opaquah area since 1931, and there are 267 local chambers of commerce servicing villages, towns, and cities throughout Wisconsin, and whereas the city provides a wide variety of services to their members, including advocacy and economic development, and whereas the chamber promotes tourism and events, and whereas the chamber works to solve critical economic challenges, including labor shortages, encourages entrepreneurship, and whereas the chamber is critical partner and problem solver with the unique ability to work with stakeholders from both the private and public sectors, and whereas the chamber does not always receive the recognition and credit they deserve for making the Opaquah area a better place to live, work, play, and visit. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Opaquah, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Opaquah Area Chamber of Commerce Month throughout the Opaquah area, and I commence this observance to all citizens. And I know that Terry is here tonight, right? To accept that, right? And you want to make some comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you very much for recognizing the chamber, and I think we have a great working relationship with the city, and we greatly appreciate that, and thanks for all that you do for us.
Thank you. Terry, I noticed that, was it 25 years that you've been executive or whatever?
Yep. I've been there a long time.
Well, congratulations on that also.
Well, thank you. Thanks, thanks very much. Perfect.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, next we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience, staff or council members that would like to give us some input on anything that's not on the agenda for tonight, please give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input tonight? All right, let's move on then. Under new business, we have Shadow Lake Sewer Improvements, and Justin, you're the one here.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's actually storm sewer improvements, so it's taking the rainwater, and we're trying to get some pretreatment before it goes into Shadow Lake. So several years ago, the city received a Knowles Nelson stewardship grant, and there's been a number of improvements, which Andrew is more familiar with than I am around Shadow Lake, dealing with getting rid of like the volleyball courts, putting a natural plantings area there, improvements at the boat dock, that sort of thing. So the grant is to improve water quality within the lakes, and we just so happen to have Mirren Shadow. So Phase Three of the plan, which is the final part, was to improve that channel that is near the lower South Park parking lot, that straight shot. Well, the plan called for it to be like a more natural stream, curvy, and back when Mr. Aaron Jensen was around, he started looking at that, and just to design that was upwards of $40,000, so would exceed certainly our budget that was remaining within this grant. So we have just shy of $20,000 left to use up. So what we did is work with the DNR, came up with some other ideas of making some storm water improvements. So we got two spots we identified. On page 43, it kind of gives you an aerial, you're all familiar with the area, you can see that one spot will be the northeast driveway into that lower South Park area will be basically that inlet that's right there, cutting a hole into it, and then creating a storage structure underneath the ground, right next to that, behind the curb, and then further down near Bowersocks Park, excuse me, there's a culvert that runs underneath the roadway, and it pretty much discharges directly into the lake. We'd be shortening that pipe, reinstalling the apron, and basically creating some rock checks so that the water that drains to the lake would filter through the grass, through the rocks, slow down some sediment, slow down some garbage, those sort of things, and again, prevent sediment load and nutrients from getting, or slowing them down from getting into the lake. Page 44 and 45 just shows a few more details, and I can go more into those upon request. And then finally, page 46 is a picture of a storage system that will be very similar to the one that I'm proposing on here in this design. So these chambers, they're basically just kind of glorified pipes underground, filled in with stone around them, they fill up with water and they slowly drain out, so they slow down those peak rainfalls. We get, you know, these heavy rains, they can slow those down from getting into the lake, stop sediment, slow down phosphorus from getting there, which promotes the growth of algae, which produces kind of a bad environment for fish and human alike. So this is what we're proposing. I've got three proposals back, and as you can see on page 42 of my memo, the listings of the three prices that we received back, so R&amp;R Wash, Falk's Brothers, and Wood Sewer, with R&amp;R Wash being the low of the three. So moving forward, we have a grant amount of $19,219. The city has already received 50% of that upfront, so the remaining balance of $15,298 would be going to just basically our storm sewer maintenance item underneath our general fund in our streets division. So remaining balance of $18,500, oh, excuse me, of $15,000, with which we have $18,000 remaining in that line item in our budget. So we have room within our budget to accommodate this, along with getting some of the grant money back. So I'm looking for a word tonight for R&amp;R Wash for the storm sewer improvements at South Park and Lakeside Parkway.
All right, any questions of Justin? So Justin is requesting that we enter into a contract with R&amp;R Wash. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve of entering into a contract with R&amp;R Wash of Ripon, Wisconsin, for storm sewer improvements at South Park and Lakeside Parkway in an amount not to exceed $24,907.50, and you did hear where Justin will be getting that money to pay that out, and that's listed on page 42 of your packet. Discussion. Steve?
I'm not sure that I understood. Sorry about that, Justin, but it's not to exceed 24.9, and we have 18.5?
We have $18,500 left in our maintenance budget. Yes, the $24,900 is the total cost of the project, of the work, but with the stewardship money that we'll be receiving from the DNR, that will cover that difference from the $24,000 down to the $15,000.
You just got to divide the 19 by two, yeah.
Yeah, the 19,000, yes. We received, 50% of that we received upfront.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It went right.
Any other questions or discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, you are up again with this WPS easement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, again. Starting on page 47 is a letter from WPS, followed by an easement document, and then a couple maps. Now, I brought this forward to council back in June, where we had a temporary exhibit similar to this one, but it was like a straight line. This is the WPS project, we're doing electrical upgrades in the Highland, High Street area. Basically, we'll be cutting through the cemetery to kind of make a loop, so much more reliable system, and along the way, they'll be upgrading everything. So people in that neighborhood will have a much better electrical service moving in the future. When I brought it to you back in June, when it cut across our cemetery, we had a straight line coming from the right away just behind Highland Drive and going just the north of our building on the cemetery. Now, when they went out there to do a field review to see how this would fit, there is a very severe drop just behind our building, which I guess I was unaware of to that extent. So they proposed a different alignment. Now, it looks very odd, but it follows basically just the contours of the land, and it's basically, it's pretty much the best fit for what's out there, this drop. If they were to go through it, would be quite a difficult construction for them. We'll never fill that in, I don't feel, so it seems like it's kind of unusable land. So the whole reason we wanted to go straight across was try to limit the impact to the future cemetery lots, but I don't think we're going to have that issue here at all, just because of the severe topography of the land. So moving forward, I'm looking for this approval to, I guess, approve this new layout, this new easement document, which is almost identical to the last one, with the exception of just a new alignment to the electrical facilities, underground electrical facilities.
All right, so.
I got a question, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
This can be above ground, or is this a buried cable?
Underground.
Underground?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Good.
So this easement is just replacing the one that we did back in June.
That's correct.
So Justin, again, is recommending that we approve this easement. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Peterson, that we approve of entering into the revised electric underground easement with Wisconsin Public Service for city-owned properties located at 915 and 936 High Street. Discussion. Sandy will call the roll.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, and then next has to do with naming an interim clerk, and I know my name's on this, Henry, but do you want to take this and explain what's going on?
Actually, you know, state statutes require that we have a city clerk to execute documents and be here, and Kathy approached the mayor with the idea of having Sandy fill that role while I'm on medical leave, which would start September 17th for three weeks. And then I hope to be back in the saddle in week four, coming back intermittently, working my way back into an eight-hour day the next couple of weeks. At least that's what my doctor tells me. Hopefully, I can move quicker and better than that, but that's really essentially is what it is, and the idea that the increased responsibility should bring some additional compensation seems reasonable, and we certainly can, we have the money in the budget, in our part-time budget for clerks, so it's really a very limited financial one.
All right. You want to tell them what your medical leave is? You don't have to, but.
Well, you guys have seen me wear shirts, and they call me Cowboy Henry for a reason. So I have a new knee, that's what it is, so. So yeah, no brain surgery, just a knee surgery. I didn't say that.
All right, so we need council approval, of course, to name Sandy as our interim clerk while Henry's, for the first three weeks at Henry's medical leave, and as per our policy, we do offer then an additional pay of $1 per hour for her doing this job. So we need a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Puchatsky, that we approve of appointing Sandy Stips to the position of interim clerk during Henry's medical leave to include an additional pay of $1 per hour. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. License report number 1418, again, this is operator's license, pending approval by the chief and background checks, and any bills that are due to the city. We'd be looking for a motion to approve this license report.
Move to approve license report number 1418. Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that we approve license report number 1418. This is an operator's license. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next we have a closed session planned for tonight, and so I would ask that we get a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that council convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, 19.85, parent one, parent E, as it concerns the deliberating of negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Discussion. Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, this is committee of the whole meeting. I do call this meeting to order. Same people are in attendance, minus John Hart. So I do call this committee of the whole meeting to order, and this has to do with budgetary items. I see Henry's up at the podium, stretching his knee, so let's go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. This is our third budget workshop for the 2019 budget. What our purpose with these workshops are to kind of introduce you to some concepts, some thoughts that the staff is having, and to kind of get your input, and then when the budget document and all that moves forward, you have some background on some of these items, and it's for information. Again, we're going to focus on personnel. The first item, Kathy wanted to give you an update kind of on our wages, as well as some of our benefit renewals.
For 2019, we have a couple of different rates that affect the budget, and the first one that we did get was for the Wisconsin retirement system. The rates are down, so our protective and our general rates are down probably 0.1%. So that does save a couple bucks here and there on the retirement contribution. Today, I received notice from the Horton Group that our health insurance renewal is a 0% increase.
Wow.
So we are either very, very healthy, or our employees aren't going to the doctor, or they've gotten off of our insurance with incentive of the opt-out. Either our users have left our plan, but the county, Wisconsin Counties Association under UMR is providing us with a 0% increase. Now, we have right now only 36 employees on our plan of the 52 that we have, so that's probably driving some of it. Because of that, I am looking at working into the budget a 2% increase for employees, and then that would be comparable to what the school district also gave. But I think we can afford a 2% increase based on some of the retirements, and just the fact that we did end 2017 on a positive note of about over $100,000, so I think it's doable. So especially with no increase in the health insurance, that's even better. So I think that that's what you'll see within the budget.
Do we know what the cost of living increase is this year yet? Do we know what that is?
It usually doesn't come out until September, because that sets also our expenditure restraint program and everything else. It's usually, I know the CPI's been running around just over 2% per month, so 2% to 3%, depending on what you're looking at.
Good.
Mayor, I think that's pretty spot-on. I had to do something with the taxi bid package, where I had to predict kind of where the price was going to be in five years, and there was a circular July newsletter from the Census or Bureau of Labor Statistics, and that was like 2.4, just through July, from July of 17 to July of 18. Well, the reason I asked is I read something on the internet, I think, which, so it has to be the truth. It was saying that we are not keeping up, labor is not keeping up with the cost of living, so I wanted to make sure that we knew what that number is. I mean, 2% is better than zero, obviously, or one, but I think we need to be cognizant of cost of living and trying to keep our employees at least at their current level.
Well, and the biggest challenge we have is the fact that the levy limit's allowing us only $22,000 to increase our levy. Hopefully, with 2020, we'll have some, a little bit more left, we'll have some net new construction more than .2, I think what it was.
.2?
.2. So I think that's some of the factors that'll go in being able to afford a raise again, and where our health insurance is, so.
Yeah, that's huge, though. I mean, that you're able to, we're able to offer a raise because the health insurance is not eating up that raise. That's nice.
For sure.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, thanks. The next section is brief presentations on some new employee requests. I think you've heard of the first one a little bit before, but Chief Ozell, you've got the floor.
For?
The second school police liaison officer. You wanted to introduce that again, and kind of where we're at with that.
All right. I apologize for not being prepared. I wasn't sure we were going to talk about this, but we had looked at getting a second PSLO in regards to what's been going on in the country for safety and everything, and we've been working with the school district in regards to that. One of the things that we looked at would be the payout as the same as we have done in the past. The school district would pay 75% of their salary, so basically during the school, for the nine months of the year, the school district would pay for their health insurance or benefits or salary, and during the summer months, we would cover the cost for the city. And we estimated the value of that, it being approximately $60,000 on the high end, as to would be comparable to what the other PSLO, what it costs total for their total package. That being said, there were two candidates internally that were interested, and which we think the cost might have been a little bit less than what that would have been, so we're looking at approximately $20,000 for an increase of our budget as to what it would cost for the city. And it's unique in regards to the layouts of the schools that we have now, because now we also do have a charter school, which is the old Chain of Lakes School. So the PSLO is responsible right now for the charter school at the Chain of Lakes, the high school, the middle school, and the learning center, which both of those are on Shoemaker Road. The idea behind it was we would have a PSLO that would work at the learning center and the middle school, and the second officer, because of the closeness, would have the high school and the charter school. Many times, over the last few years, we've just been responding to complaints, the PSLO has been extremely busy, so we're in kind of a reactive program instead of being proactive. So one of the things that we wanted to focus on this year was more education in the schools when it comes to safety for the children, internet safety, talking to them more about the DARE program, and other programs that go within the school. At this point, I have met with Mr. Nian, who is the superintendent of schools. There was also a meeting- There was also a meeting with the part of the school board, and there was discussion. And as of right now, it is coming down to budget time with them as to locating money, and as to where we're at with, with the city's portion, where it's, it's just kind of on hold as to right now. I believe they're going to be talking within the next few weeks, and I should actually know whether or not we're able to go forward with that position for, for next year. One of the nice things for the police department this year is because we did have some officers get off the health insurance, we're able to absorb that within our budget this year, as well as if the second PSLO were to be hired, their wages and benefits would be absorbed by the school district. So there's a savings for the city there. And next year, we may be looking at a retirement, which also is going to have a savings for us as to when we, when we go through that process. So we would be able to absorb that in our budget this year as well as next year. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Plus, just questions.
Any questions? Go ahead, Scott.
Chief, was the second PSLO initiated by the school district or your department the thought behind it? Do you, are they requesting one, or?
It was, it was a mutual talk in, in regards to different meetings that we have been involved with, with school safety, and in talking with school safety and the principals and the administrations of the school as to how we can make the schools safer. So it was a mutual talk that was discussed when we would go to meetings with different school districts as to how it was brought up as to what can we actually do to make our schools safer, and the idea of having an officer inside the school, if something were to happen, they're there right away and they can deal with that situation, and that's proven to be the, the best solution to that problem.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. I think Emily, you're pitch heading for PEG, right, on the next one? Okay.
Yes. Okay. So I don't know if PEG gave you all a memo about this, but I will, I'll read it so that you at least hear it. We have a personnel timeline. So in August of 2017, our assistant director IT coordinator resigned, I think you all remember that. In January, I was hired, formerly the teen librarian, to fill that vacancy. In May of 2018, we hired a part-time teen intern to fill the teen librarian position temporarily. In August of 2018, we hired that same intern to be the full-time teen librarian. Moving forward in October of this year, we plan to, or hope to, we're proposing to hire a circulation manager adult services librarian. And then in February or March, we'll be having a retiree, so we'll, we'll be planning to hire for that position as well, audio video technical services librarian. So over the next, the course of the next six months, we will combine three part-time, or I'm sorry, three positions, two part-time and one full-time into two full-time positions. Precedence was, was set last year when Parks and, Park and Rec Department promoted two part-time positions to full-time to meet the needs of the community served. Increased cost was, is made possible by promoting two part-time employees to full-time and using increase, the increase in funding from Wapaka County to cover the balance. So we are not asking for additional funds from the city to make this possible. Just a little bit of background in more detail. In January, we replaced Dominic Frandrup with, who left our employ in August. I, Emily Heidemann, was hired in his place. This left the teen librarian's position, a full-time position, open. And our original plans included hiring a new teen librarian in May of 2018, but ultimately decided hiring and training a new librarian in the summer, when our youth department is consumed with summer reading program, was just not feasible. We opted instead to hire a summer intern, and were able to fill that position with a college student we had on staff. This was a part-time position with no benefits. As the summer was winding down, we advertised and interviewed to fill the position of teen librarian, and decided the summer intern was the best candidate for the position. This full-time position was filled in early August. In 2012, the library board changed the teen librarian's position, shifting focus only to teens. Up until that point, this position split time between the adult and teen departments. While we shifted some part-time hours to adult services, the change left only two full-time positions, previously three, to serve adults in our community. Having another full-time position to serve adults has become a priority. The original plan was to promote two part-time employees to full-time when the AV technical services librarian retires in March. However, since we did not hire and replace the teen librarian until August of this year, we have funds in the 2018 budget to cover another full-time employee to be hired late fall of 2018. Excuse me. The job description for circulation manager adult services librarian has been approved by the library personnel committee and will go to the library board in September, along with a proposal for the placement of this position in the compensation plan. Excuse me. Our 2019 budget includes an increase in revenue from Wapaka County, which will allow the library to afford increased cost, mainly health insurance, of these new positions. In February or March of 2019, the library will promote a current part-time employee to be technical services, audio video technical services librarian, to replace the librarian who is retiring in March. This long-term employee has had some health problems and, that have required use of sick leave, so there will not be a large sick leave payout. So that's all, all that I have.
Okay.
Other questions?
Anybody have any questions? I, I have a few, but I think I'd like to talk to Kathy and PEG first before I talk about that. Just understanding the, how the county funding and the city funding works together and so on. Understand that we're talking about two departments that can basically do what they want with their personnel, so, I mean, it's our decision for funding purposes, but not for staffing purposes. So it's good to, to have them bring those forward to us, but, and it doesn't look like it's going to be any increase to the city for, for the funding, for the library position, and not for the PSLO, at least this year. So, so that shouldn't affect our budget, but I just have a few more questions before I, and this is just a proposal that they're going to bring forward, I'm assuming, Henry. We're not agreeing to it or disagree.
No, no, this is a workshop, it's to introduce these ideas and likely see them in the draft budget.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
We're on number four of the agenda, or no, excuse me, letter C. Discussion of offering following benefits to permanent or regular part-time employees or personnel, and Josh was going to introduce this. Josh, here he comes.
I believe his memo was in your packet.
Okay. As a department that relies fully on part-time employees, with the exception of my position, it can be a challenge. I've got a couple, I've kind of had a revolving door over the years particularly with Wapaka Online retaining employees just because it's only part-time, and I've had two types of employees come through there. Some that, they're just here for a while, maybe they're a college student getting experience, who their goal is they need full-time employment, they need that salary, they need the health insurance, and I know they're not going to stay, and I've got the other type of employee, and I've got two of those right now, they're not necessarily desiring full-time employment, they're content working part-time, they dabble around in other things, but this position's kind of their main source of income regardless. And I know one of those employees is looking around for something else right now, because what he's, what they're getting here isn't quite cutting it, it's close, but they're looking for a little more. And it's going to continue this way, and the city has, I don't have an official number, but maybe somewhere between 12 and 15 regular part-time employees that work across the city in key roles that are just as important as our full-time employees. Some of those part-time employees have been here for decades, some come and go, and there's been some ideas I've been discussing with the other department heads about maybe offering some limited benefits to some of our regular part-time employees. And that's someone that works no more than 59 hours per pay period in a 12-month period, or 29 hours a week, 29 and a half hours a week on average. And just looking for some things to increase their value with the city, and, you know, if it's someone that's looking to work full-time, this isn't going to make their, make or break their decision to stay here, but for someone that's on the fence, who part-time's okay, this might be something that tips them one way or the other. And there's three key areas that I've been discussing. One would be offering access to the city's dental and vision insurance, and those are both benefits, that if an employee takes those, those costs are fully paid by the employee, there is no cost paid by the city. And the reason I brought that up is I had one of my part-time employees kind of ask about that a little bit. I think they are buying their own private dental insurance, and it might be something we're getting on the city plan, may or may not save them money, so that's why I threw that on here. Another thing is, you know, my two employees that are working significant part-time hours, if they want time off to take a vacation, or are sick, or, you know, you take Thanksgiving Week, for example, where we don't work Thursday or Friday, they're losing two days that might be normally scheduled, they get no paid time off. There is one exception for employees that are grandfathered under the 2011 Employee Handbook, before that was changed. I do have one of those employees that is grandfathered, who does get some paid time off, and some time away from work helps rejuvenate you and keep you fresh for what you're doing, or keeps that paycheck consistent if an illness comes. And another idea I've been floating around is maybe offering some limited part-time, paid time off to our regular part-time employees. And the idea I tossed out is taking an average of what they've worked per week the previous year and applying that for the current year, so that way, in essence, they've got enough hours that they could take a week off and get away without breaking the budget. And then kind of the third area is letting them participate in the city's wellness program, whether it's seeing a wellness coach, participating in the challenges, or taking advantage of a city-provided health club membership. And again, this was another thing that one of my part-time employees asked about. So I'm just looking for some things to kind of increase value to our regular part-time employees, whether to help retain them longer, or maybe to make recruitment a little more attractive for new employees. So, any questions or comments, I'll try to answer those.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Just a reminder to council members and some of you that are new, back in 2011, before 2011, permanent part-time employees did receive benefits from the city, and we eliminated those for any new hires, and that's what Josh was alluding to before. And that was mainly a budgetary item that we did that for. So again, we're going to have to look at the budget numbers before we would formally look at your request, and how many people that affects, because you had said it doesn't just affect your two or three people that you have.
Yeah.
It'd be all permanent part-time employees. So, just a little background information for everybody.
I think it's a really good idea to at least look into it, do some math, figure out how much it's going to cost. I think it's important to give our people at least some benefit, other than just straight pay for what, when they're here. I really like the vacation idea.
Okay. Any other comments?
Are council members considered permanent part-time?
No.
Just wondering if by definition it could be extended, though. I'm going to open a can of worms, that's all.
Well, I don't know, you know, we've been asked this a few times, and the answer is we usually don't answer it. But maybe Kathy will be right.
The elected officials do not participate in Wisconsin retirement. We're looking at those employees that already are on our Wisconsin retirement plan, so that's anyone who was grandfathered at 600 hours or more per year, and now is up to 1,200 hours per year. So there is a, a difference in the type of employee, because you're giving them a retirement. So you're giving them some benefits, so now it's just additional. The, be able to go on to the employee, our employee dental and vision, I don't see that as a big impact, but it's not available to, like I said, to the elected officials.
Mm-hmm. Scott?
My memory serves me right, I think Steve is on it too. I sat on that handbook revision Personnel Committee, and I'd just like to make sure we revisit our reasoning behind eliminating that back then, just so we can refresh our memories before we go ahead, like you said, and, and reinstall it, just to, you know, kind of give us a, a grasp on what we thought back then, and might have to think now.
Okay.
I would just say that when we went through that, we gave, it was a give and take with the employees.
Yeah.
And I thought we were actually quite generous with what we gave, but in some areas we took too, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Kathy?
I just want to add, it's, it's just like, the business is outside of here, the recruitment is very, very competitive, so there, you're going, you've got Aldi that's paying $11 to $14 an hour with health insurance, McDonald's is paying with health insurance or with benefits, and I think that with Josh and some of the other departments, especially like our janitors, we run into some real hard times in trying to get the, the best, best person. So by qualifying that it is with Wisconsin retirement, and the fact that Wisconsin retirement employees have to have more than 1,200 hours now, where it used to be 600 hours, I think there, it's, it makes that pool of employees much smaller than if you had 600 hours. So that, that 1,200 is, is a little bit more than part-time. So part-time employee, 20 hours a week would be 1,040 hours, so now you're talking almost 25 to 30-hour employees. So you're almost to the, to the end where you're at a 32-hour employee, which would qualify under federal regulations as a full-time employee.
Okay. Yeah, Eric, I'm sorry.
I really agree with what Kathy said, because even the foundry has gone down to where they hire part-time employees for the first time ever, and they, they're still a lot of bodies short. I think we're, we're probably short 40 bodies just at Plant 2, 3 alone. So the pool, you know, we're all fighting for the same bodies out there now, so we want to keep the ones that we have. So I think Josh's ideas, as Mary said, we really need to explore these ideas and see if we can figure something out to, to make them happy.
I would agree with Mary and Eric and Kathy. Where everybody's looking for workers, where I am, we are so short, and finding it real difficult to get people to come.
Yeah.
I like the idea.
I think it's something worth looking at, but there is a reason why we, why we got rid of it in the past, and I think that's important to, to know the history of it before we just jump into it. So that's all we said.
That was what, seven years?
On the services, it doesn't look too bad budget-wise, they're on their own, or, you know, if it's a sick leave, or you're not adding anything at the end for bonuses or top-off or extended pay and future pensions, so it looks like once you set a number, you would be set, but again, you'd probably better look at it thoroughly. Right. Okay. Anything else on that? Henry, next?
Next thing we'd like to talk with council about are a couple changes to the handbook, that was a good segue from Scott, because we wanted to talk a little bit about that. I think Justin's going to lead us off and talk about the comp, compensatory time.
Yep. So we're looking to increase that, it's actually 44 hours currently of comp time that's able to be built up for our employees, and typically this And typically, this is built up with snow events, public works for sure, also park-and- wreck individuals, and then also utility individuals that get called in on the weekends. And the time that they occur over forty, they can either take overtime pay, or they can build up their comp time, which they can choose to use later in the same year. If they don't use it, then the city pays it out at that rate regardless at the end of the year. This has been requested to me from my departments for several years. They would like to see this increased up to sixty. It was at sixty at one point. From what I understand, it was brought down to forty-four, and they'd like to see it up there, just because the crew now has gotten a lot younger in the last few years. They're middle-aged to younger men like myself that have families, and they'd rather spend the time at home instead of getting that paycheck. So this is just coming from them as a desire to have a little bit more time versus a little bit larger of a paycheck. And it really does not affect the budget at all. It doesn't cost the city, because basically what they work is what they incur, and what they can use, or what they get paid out. And really, what it boils down to is just the management of our supervisors at our various public works departments, and other departments as well, of basically working into the schedule of when guys can actually take this. And it is, it's kind of an art form that they all deal with, especially in the winter time, when the weather gets bad, of allowing certain guys to take off, and not allowing certain guys to take off. So it's definitely a thing where they will ensure that the work gets done, but they would appreciate this little extra benefit.
So you, you understand what he's saying, when it doesn't cost any money. Let's say a person has sixty hours of overtime, and right now, they can only take forty-four of that as, as comp time, and then the other sixteen, we would have to pay out. So now he's saying that instead, they could take all sixty of it as comp time, versus being paid out any of it. Or they could choose to have it all paid out if they want.
Do they take it out in an hour and a half per hour?
They do.
Comp time?
Yeah, if...
If they work sixty hours?
They earn it as time and a half, that gets banked as one and a half hours.
Right.
At their current pay rate.
Right.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
So it's one and a half hours at their current pay rate, it's not one and a half hours at an overtime rate? I'm trying to make this...
Current rate times a half, yeah. It's time and a half.
Time and a half, yeah.
It's time and a half.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's paid out as time and a half, or, well, yeah. It's like a vacation day.
We say, there Kathy, as far as they take comp, do they, does that mean we don't pay into the retirement system?
Well, yeah, it would be that, that they take it at straight time, so it would still be part of their annual salary, but you wouldn't be paying any, any, on that halftime. I think that's where your savings would be, is on the half, because they, they would be just taking it out at straight. And you'd be, you know, saving on social security and Wisconsin retirement on that.
Yeah. So it might even make sense from that standpoint.
But it might make your job tougher, because you'd have certain people not on the job for more hours. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's probably the biggest concern with this whole thing, is, well, now they're not here at their job, but, you know, I'm, I'm confident in our crews, in our staff, that, I mean, they're too proud to let work slide. You know, when work needs to get done, they're going to get it done.
Well, and they can't take time so that somebody else gets overtime. You know what I mean? So somebody can't fill in for them.
Yeah, somebody's watching.
And when we have an emergency, they might get called in anyways if they try to take it during a snowstorm.
Yeah. And there is no abuse of overtime. They're not looking to get overtime, they're not adjusting their work, or adjusting their schedules to get overtime. That's, that does not happen on our crews.
Okay. So, I mean, we've been talking public works, but have you looked at citywide, how many employees would be affected by this? I mean, are there other departments?
We would have two. Most of ours still comes from snow removal and stuff, but there's call-ins in the summer. I know Casey had to come in on a Friday night late, just the other week, to fix a door that got beaten, unfortunately. So there's opportunities like that, but I would definitely be in favor of this as well.
Okay. Library has that also?
Library does also. We have, we have a handful of full-time employees that would, would qualify for the time and a half, or...
So they're already getting the forty-four hours?
Yeah, I believe so.
They are?
Everybody across the board has the forty-four hours cap on, on the comp timer. So if they get up to the forty-four hours, then if they do work any overtime, and they haven't taken any time off, we're paying, we're paying it out at time and a half.
Yeah, there was something about trying to make it the same across the board, and I know the police union has always been forty-four hours, so what, what they chose to do, or what we chose to do as a city, is reduce it so that everybody was at forty-four.
I remember right, that was our rationale, I think, more than anything else, just to make it across the board.
Right. Okay. So we'll have to look at that. We're into negotiations with the police union this year too. We haven't met yet, but we will be. Anybody else? Okay.
Well, the next handbook item is the inclement weather policy. In my twenty years here, we've never closed City Hall early, or closed it at all. I think library does do a couple closures every year. But we came to learn that really our policy was very vague, and that we needed to update. And I guess in your packet, you can kind of see the updated policy, you can kind of see the edits through the couple times that, we talked about this at the department head meeting. I guess there's a couple points here, just without going into super amount of detail here, is, one is, we want to stress the safety of the public, as well as our employees. We don't want to put them at risk necessarily of trying to get to work or coming to the library. Number two, in the draft policy change, it's incumbent upon the employees to speak with their supervisor, to have that discussion about whether they should come in on a closure, whether they stay when we close maybe at two o'clock in the afternoon, potentially, in a major storm. And number three, the idea that the employees wouldn't lose pay, because they could, in addition, you know, they could use a personal day, they could use vacation. And I think the thing for the council is, the staff, we had a lot of spirited discussion about this, and the thought was to include the ability for the employee to take a sick day, so they can be whole on, on their pay for that week. We have the Fair Labor Standards Act, or the Wage and Hour Law, we've got a Wage and Hour Law, probably is what it is, that we have to comply with, where you have to do it in that seven-day work week. So if we get a storm on Friday, there's not a lot of opportunity for people to make that time up in that pay period. So the ability for them to use a benefit to get their full paycheck is something that's talked about and made more clear here. Other organizations, other governments in east-central Wisconsin, when that storm hit in April, made the decision to pay holiday pay for all the employees. This poly, this policy doesn't allow that, is the way it's written now. There were input, I guess some input, the idea of using vacation or your personal day, right, that is meant for your use, and to have to use it to get a full paycheck seemed like that was not a reasonable use of that benefit. However, sick leave is an accrued benefit to employees, and the idea would be to allow the use of sick leave as well. It's not written in this draft, but that is, I think, a decision point for you. And again, there would be consultation with the, with the supervisor, department head, to decide on how you're going to handle that closure. Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you sometimes stay open when the library closes, or you try to follow what the library's doing when you do a closure?
Not necessarily. We follow what the school does. So the senior center will close if the school is closed, to try to keep the seniors, you know, from having to come in, or wanting to come in. And the only other thing we follow is if the school closes early, we'll generally close at four, because not much is going on after that point. But our office stays open until our four o'clock. School gets out early, we'll, we'll close sometimes, but we don't, we don't always follow. The only thing we follow is the senior center. Other than that, we generally stay open.
Thank you. Probably one other point to make here is, the policy affecting use of benefits would be for our hourly employees. Our salary employees would not be impacted. The idea there is, okay, for instance, most, well, all of us are salaried in here, and the staff, we're here tonight. We don't get paid for that. If our work week's sixty hours, it's sixty hours, and that's the way it is. So this really is driven more for trying to give some clarity for our hourly employees on how to handle them. Will we have another incident like we had in April? I, I, I don't know, but our, our policy needed to be updated a little bit. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Council, Brennan, go ahead.
So as Henry mentioned, this has been a spirited discussion during the department head meetings that we have, and I've brought it up, a couple different discussion points. One being, I don't think we can just center this around the inclement weather policy. You know, discussing this with my staff, we have, have other potential issues that may arise when the city may have to close in the event of a fire, a flood, or something else. So I think that needs to be considered. And secondly, we are, everyone that sits here this evening is a salaried employee, but from a fairness standpoint, I think we're penalizing our part-time employees, or, excuse me, our hourly employees, by requiring them to take a day vacation, or utilizing the benefit, where, again, we don't have to, as salaried employees. So I know that it's been spirited discussion in my departments, and I believe in other departments, that from a fairness standpoint, is whatever the decision is made, it should be made across the board.
The staff, department heads brought this forward to me to talk about it, and I, quite honestly, tried to talk them out of even bringing this forward, quite honestly. But they did bring it forward anyways, and not to be mean or anything like that, but, you know, when we have salaried employees, they make it up by doing their work during other hours. Like Henry said, the hourly employees are not making up their work, and that's the difference, quite honestly. And I got to tell you, when we closed City Hall, I wasn't worried about anybody's pay or anything else. We were worried about safety. That's all we were worried about, is safety. Twenty-two years that I've been here, that's the only time we've ever closed. So I don't know why it's such a big issue right now, to tell you the truth. I mean, if it happened, if it happens again this year, it's an issue. But I, you know, I, I don't think it is. And I, I think we've given them many opportunities to make up their hours if they want to make up their hours. And I think we do a pretty good job in compensating our employees. And sometimes they're just going to be unhappy with our decisions. Okay, anything else, Henry?
Well, I guess on, on this, I think Brennan does raise a, a good point about...
Anything else, Henry, about, I mean, I think we've...
Okay, expanding the definition. So I guess it's a handbook change, but I wouldn't want to bring the whole handbook forward, but just to have the policy change maybe as a separate action sometime in the, in the, in the future.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, the last item is employee performance appraisal system. You know, you've heard me talk about this. We've been working on this for a couple years now. And we put together a team of, I think, six or seven employees across a number of departments. Some were hourly employees, some were department heads. And we kind of worked through a process, and we developed a process that we, we kicked the tires on last fall, and we went through it. And we knew that we would want to probably make some changes based on the feedback of the process. And we did get some feedback, and we changed some of the, some of the forms and some of the approach. We learned that, you know, there's some people that really want to use the manual system, and we've got some people that would like to maybe go all online with this, but I don't think we're at this point. This is mainly for the departments that are direct reports to me. The police department has a system in place that they use, and the library, they updated their system a couple of years ago. So this would be for all the other departments. And a couple things came up when we debriefed, and we're going to want to start this process in the next couple of weeks. I'm going to have a meeting with the supervisors, there's fourteen or fifteen, to go through kind of the process, kind of, you know, how they should be thinking about weighting their grades, how to talk to employees, and what you should be doing to sort of set goals and, and hold people accountable. And that's an ongoing thing. I, you know, we can learn, all of us in supervisory roles, how to manage people, and how to talk with them, to get the most out of them, and for the organization as well. So we wanted to do this again this year, and two thoughts came up, and again, they're budgetary. One was some kind of way to recognize employees with some small monetary item, you know, it could, you know, it could be in the winter, it could be at Christmas, it could be a birthday thing, you know, like a fifty-dollar gift card or something. We used to do that. We used to give a birthday card, but there was this thing called the Great Recession, and we turned over every rock we had, and we eliminated that. We eliminated volunteer party, we used to do, and some of that stuff. So that was one theme, but also, I wanted to propose the ability to provide some incentives that aren't really, well, they are cost, but our group, and again, I'm carrying the water for the group, and in support of what they'd like to see happen, is that the ten percent of our employees that would get exceptional marks, if you will, or evaluations, would be given something like an extra personal day, or maybe a twenty-five-dollar gift card. It's not something that's going to break the bank. And I had talked to the mayor about this, that, you know, these are personnel matters, so it kind of needs to be somewhat discreet. But I would work the system with the department heads, and that we would make the justification to the mayor, and let the mayor basically sign off on those rewards. And again, there's a lot of literature out there, that there's things we can be doing that are no cost, recognizing publicly good stuff that gets done, and that's all in the mix too. But these are sort of budgetary items that I wanted to try to introduce, and, and see if you had any reaction, good, bad, or otherwise, and maybe answer any questions you might have about it. But it's, it's, it's not going to be a big-ticket item by any means, and it would result mainly in probably time off we would use. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts?
I do have a couple thoughts. The reward system is based on employee performance appraisals. The criteria for how people are appraised is pretty darn important then, when some people with a higher mark get something, and the people with a lower mark don't. So I think there's a... So, I think there's a potential for divisiveness among staff because of that. So, I think that's just at least a cautionary comment. I'm not a fan of that. I never have been in, in my work experience. I think non-monetary rewards are awesome and wonderful, but once you start giving money, even if it's a small amount, it just seems to divide people. And, and the, it's the supervisor who is assessing or evaluating their employee. So, then you kind of open yourself up to, well, he never liked me anyway, and that's why I got a bad mark, either that sort of thing, which is just human nature, but...
Well, I probably made a mistake in not including the forms that we use to garner against that. We do three-sixty reviews.
Okay.
As well as the employee does a self-evaluation. So, to your point, yeah, there are other reward systems. I mean, when we sit and we develop the work plans for the, the next year, it might be an employee says, "I'd like to acquire this skill." So, the monetary part of it is putting some money in the training budget so that person could go to an eight-hour course on a particular topic.
Okay.
So, probably, and, and that was my oversight. I, I will send you all those forms so you can kind of get an idea of sort of what that is. I mean, we, we learned, and that was one, one point that we picked up. We have, I, we looked and kicked the tires really hard of a system, I believe it was of Florida county government. We, we reviewed literature. I mean, we worked on this over a year, and most employees do not think they're going to get a fair shake from their boss.
Right.
Pretty clear that, so that's, other people get to weigh in. And I think training is real important to how these, how this is done. And I think if I shared that form with you and the process, you'll feel maybe a little better that that gets mitigated.
Okay.
But I think this came out in the, in the, in the working group that we, we wanted this year, because it's sort of the first year of rewards, to really kind of do something non-monetary, and more of the monetary was maybe doing something for all the employees. Now, a two percent raise, they're not going to have to pay any increased costs for their health insurance this year or twenty-nineteen. Perhaps that's not enough, but we want to be able to recognize some, some of our top performers. And, and you know, ninety percent of us are going to be meets expectations.
Right.
And not every year is somebody going to be a super performer. I mean, what differential each them is taking on a unique project. Something that came about because of some personnel issues or, or something, a job well done. And we kind of reward people that way now in some respects. If somebody leaves us and they take an interim position, we reward that. We say, "You've got more responsibility, you get, you're going to receive some more compensation." So, you know, I can't give you every exact situation where somebody might qualify for a day off. It would just, it would just be part of that process we would work through. And again, I'll start talking, stop talking, but you know, sixty employees that are being evaluated, I wouldn't expect four or five employees to garner any recognition beyond, "Thank you for doing a good job, you meet expectation."
It does bring up a good point though, Henry, in the committee, the whole agenda tonight. What were you, by bringing this up, what were you thinking? How is this going to affect our budget?
Well, it'd be great if we could find some money in twenty-eighteen, I think, to, to maybe do something for all employees. But for next year, I mean, it would, it would, it would probably be, you know, five hundred bucks with the idea of some maybe extra time off for somebody that does something good or above exceeds expectations.
Henry, let me, let me ask you, and this is, you don't have to answer this, and neither do the staff. If you wanted to do this, what if we did this in place of your two percent pay increase?
Yeah. Well, that two percent equates to thirty-five thousand dollars probably. And that is not what our working group wanted to do because we wanted to start small.
So, instead of two percent, it's one and three, three quarters.
Pardon?
Instead of two percent, it's one and three quarters. And we are compensating you for longevity and for your hard work by giving you a pay increase. Right? So, this should be part of that package.
Well, we talked about longevity, if you remember, last year, and that was just not an idea that was affordable. I think some of you liked it, if I remember, some didn't. We do recognize longevity in our police contract. So, again, it was more introducing an idea that I don't think is going to be a big budget buster. And, you know, I think what we're trying to do is, 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 is good. This committee came up with something. It's not going to be perfect even this year, and it's all part of a process.
I really get concerned about that because everybody in their mind might think they're doing this really great and wonderful thing, and they're not chosen. And then I, and that affects the ego of, you know, them, and it's, I, how, how are you going to pick? I mean...
Well, well, I can't tell you, I can't tell you now, but I will tell you that the key to this is good supervision. And we made an investment in our supervisors early this year. We went through sixteen-hour supervisor training, how to coach people, how to talk to them. And this isn't a one-off. You know, I, I think, you know, this is important. We learned that supervisors are the key to this. They can't be biased. They have to work really hard not to be biased. They got to know how to talk to somebody, you know, how you conduct an interview. There's, you know, there's techniques to, to, to do that. You know, this...
Henry, I'm going to, I'd like to interrupt you a minute because I want to clarify what I said before, and I don't mean to imply that I, I think the supervisors would be incompetent to fairly evaluate their employees. I, I don't mean that at all. And, and I, I think that if we have the opportunity, I know there used to be a personnel committee, and city council was involved in that, so we're, but we're not anymore. And so, so I, I wasn't aware of all the work that you've, you've mentioned in at many meetings.
Mary, stop. Now, you stop. We do have a personnel committee. We are the personnel committee.
I know, but we're not privy to the day-by-day things.
We're all the personnel committee.
Okay.
I don't want to hear that anymore.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead.
Well, yeah, and you know, there's some healthy skepticism about this whole process. Okay, this is a huge organizational change, and you know what? We need to do it. We need to coax the most of our people. All right? We can all do better.
Absolutely.
And we got to have a system to do that, okay? The Foundry does performance evaluations, and they tie bonuses to it. You know, everybody says you got to act like, more like the private sector. I have young employees that come up to me and said, "I want to get paid when I do something good, and over and above." And our older people are like, "Well, you know, what's in it for me? You're giving this to somebody, I want the same thing." And I think that's a little bit of our holdover from our, our unions, right? Parity, equity. But it's not unusual to reward exceptional, be, exceptional performance. And I guess all I'm saying here is we just want to try it with some minimal rewards. And I guess I'm just trying to be transparent with you as a, as a group that we'd like to try that this year, and it may, it may not work.
I, I still didn't get the answer on how this affects our budget for two thousand nineteen.
Well, one of the committee recommendations was to do something for the employees at, I don't know, holiday, if it's a birthday, something like that, where we would just say, "Thank you," gift card. You know, they, when I first got here, we did turkeys twenty years ago. Again, it would be just a restore program we used to have, but for budgetary reasons, we, we eliminated it. And I think that was sort of the compromise to bring people along to the employee who, who does meet expectations. So, if the employee working next to them, and it doesn't have to be broadcast, but this employee that works next to this, another employee, gets an extra day of vacation or a personal day. It doesn't have to be broadcast, it can be discreet. It should only be between the supervisor and the employee.
Probably not.
It'll get broadcast.
It will get broadcast. That's almost, but you know, I think the Foundry, you know, they're, they're different from us. We're city, and you know, I'm county. There's no, if you, if you do something good, there's a board on the back that said, "Caught in a good act." You know, there's a spirit committee that is our little fun time to do it. It's no cost to anybody. But I, you know, I think the Foundry is just not something that we can compare ourselves to when we're county and city government.
Well, okay, I'm going to disagree with that because I really think that our employees, again, we're all fighting for employees. And, and I think you brought up a good point that what we, the, the, we need to do the best we possibly can for our employees. I certainly agree with that. My comment about money was the thing where just to give someone fifty bucks is at not as meaningful as some of the other ideas you might have, okay?
Yeah, we, we talked about a lot of that.
And certainly going to a conference or getting to get some education paid for is, is a great idea. But no, I, I think as part of the personnel committee, I think that we should definitely pursue the idea of rewards. And I would, I'd be very interested to see the, the appraisal form that you're using and stuff, so. And hats off to all the work that you've done to develop that.
Anything else? Anybody?
Did I misunderstand that it's, that it's off the appraisal or your evaluation and not about just caught in a good act or caught in, you know, now no recognition for...
Oh, no, no, that should be going year-round. And see, that's the other thing. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion about this. It's like, why even do it? Right? Why even do it? Because supervision's a daily thing, not just filling out some form. And that's all part of the supervisor training and, and coaching them to bring them along to be the best that they can be because that trickles down to the, the line workers. So, it's, it's, it's a culture change, and there's going to, you know, it's going to take a little bit, I think. Thank you.
Should have probably started with that one. Okay. Anything else for the committee of the hall? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Kealan, that we adjourn till our next meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at seven fifty-two P.M. Have a great night, everybody.